Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments from the public? Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, two. Under the consent agenda, I'd like to add the retirement announcements of Vince Masso and Ann Stetson. These came in after the packet went out, but I think it's appropriate that we add it.
Okay.
Please. All right. Student representative report. So do we not, we do not have our student rep tonight, but do we have a report from our committee on student representation?
We still have one application for the junior rep, and through David, we have asked that Patrick Burke set up some time for the subcommittee of Julie and I to meet with the student candidate. Hopefully, that will happen in the next week or so.
One question I had for him, if you guys are going to meet with him, is I know he's head of this other student group that supposedly meets on Wednesdays, and since he's head of it, I wondered if he could move those meetings to another night possibly.
He's actually identified a couple conflicts with Wednesday nights, so that's one of the issues that we definitely need to discuss.
Yeah. Because track meets, for example, I think was the other one, and track meets you can't change, but that might be one or two. It's a different thing if it's every Wednesday night. He's supposed to have this other meeting.
Yeah, totally.
So we'll follow up.
All right. More to come. Do you have anything else, David, on student voice or any announcements by again? All right. All right. Communication, planned community outreach. So we talked about this at our last meeting. Where we left that one? So the notes that I have was we were checking in a little bit more with the South, with the School Board Association for social media and blog information, but that may have already been done. Is that fair?
I was going to track down the people and ask them to get back to us.
Okay.
And I have not tracked them down yet.
Since Monday.
Give yourself a break.
Forty-two hours. Come on, Martin.
But I'm about to give myself a little reminder, so I will track them down purposefully tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Then we've talked about frequently asked questions. Do we want to cover that now, or do we want to cover that under the master planning and visioning?
It's probably more relevant to master planning and visioning, I would think.
Okay, sounds good. And then I agreed to create some communication guidelines, documents for the board's review, and we agreed to kind of confirming a process so that when the board chair responds to community emails, that the board members are aware that that's happening. We get copied on that. That's all I have on that topic. Is there any other conversation for us tonight on this topic? Are we waiting for those items? Look at us being efficient. City and school collaboration. We had talked at the last meeting about a possible meeting on the 28th. I think we've heard from Tom Hubbard that that's not going to, those dates are not workable for the city council, so they're looking at the first week of May now.
Yeah. So the first week, and he could do it the second, but we have a board meeting on the fourth. So I don't know, you know, it makes it a longer night.
Right.
Particularly without the things that we have, but we could do it on the fourth, have it at the beginning, and then, and then do it that way, or we could just have a separate night. Again, it's a pretty busy, I think the steering committee will be an important, could be. You have to talk about that, I think, about what you want to have on that, but.
Yeah, the fourth is a really full agenda. We actually talked about starting early as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I. I communicated, but I'm out the fourth, too.
Oh, okay.
So if we could do it before then.
So I, I mean, I, I don't know, the second is a Tuesday, right?
No, that would be a Monday, if the fourth is our board meeting on a Wednesday.
That's right. It is Monday.
What's this, when does the city council meet Monday now, like that week?
Yes.
Could we meet before their meeting?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, they, that's the second. They said they could do it before the council meeting.
Problem with that is it probably feels rushed, you know? That's not our problem. That's, that's theirs, and maybe they would need to just carve that out, you know? I don't know. Does that, does that work? Do you want to try to shoot for the second?
I would, I would say for me personally, that would be good. I think from a steering committee point of view, it would be good to have one sooner rather than later with all the topics that are crossing both of our boundaries. I would like to put on the calendar. Is the second work for people here?
Yes.
Julie's going to check. So with possibly one exception, it probably works for the school board. Can you reach, can you get back to Tom and see if that works for that?
Yeah.
Confirm that?
Yeah.
Perfect. And I would just add that the meetings between Kevin and Helen and David and myself are scheduled, and we have not had another one since I last reported, so I think we're scheduled for later this month.
Yep. And we hope, we hope that that's going to maintain or hold. We're not positive, given Helen's schedule.
Helen's got a few more things on her plate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions on city-school collaboration? Moving right along then, administrative reports.
So you have two things. This is, we're bringing back personal learning plans. Last time we met, there was a few questions around looking at some of the, what would the document actually look like? So you have in your packet the actual personal learning plan document, and I've asked Stuart to just open up one that's specific to the high school and walk you briefly around the website that's currently in play to help staff and students make that happen. So I just want a brief little overview of that and then answer any questions that you might have around PLPs.
So just.
Sorry, we're going to turn.
So just quickly, as David said, there's a copy of the middle school plan that's currently being used in your packets, in the front of your packet, because Martin had asked the question of, you know, what does one actually look like? And, you know, these are evolving, but this is, so the instructor who did the quarter-long courses, remember, all ninth graders do two quarter-long courses? And so basically, they were setting up their Google site, which will eventually be part of their sophomore exhibition, and, you know, works along the pages of their PLP. So some of their pieces, you know, what are their dreams, their fears, their challenges, a four-year plan, needs. So again, these are very quick pieces, you know, how do you personalize your portfolio? How do you create links, new tabs? Then the various issues such as personal development and self-awareness, problem-solving, collaboration, communication, digital citizenship, and financial literacy. So again, for each one of these things, they spend time talking about these things so that students can begin to work along those ways for both transferable skills ends and the other pieces that become part of the process. So if there are any questions, this is obviously a blank document, you know, because we can't show you student documents.
Well, we can redact a lot, but it's, at this point, it's, that's a little.
Well, a redacted website would be.
Yeah, it's not easy to, we can give you a copy of it, you know? And again, I think the most important thing, and this is evolving, you know, the high school and the middle school are working, they're currently in place, but we know there's going to be tweaks along the way, you know?
So you're not storing the PLPs themselves within Naviance, you're storing them within the.
No, actually, they all have links into Naviance. That was on that first page, and they, they learn how to actually work through Naviance. The juniors and seniors, as I said, were doing dual enrollment. They are in Naviance, their plans, they're obviously, to a less extent than these kinds of plans. One of the things today at the faculty meeting at the high school was going over what PLPs begin to look like next year when they go into advisory and not into the course. So again, this is, you know, an evolving process, and next year at this time, I give you another report that'll give you a lot more information. But we're on schedule, and, you know, the goal is nineteen, twenty nineteen, not nineteen nineteen, which happened a long time ago. Pardon my gait.
So I don't know if the board has specific questions. Hopefully, that provides a little bit more of a, you know, demonstration of what's happening or what is in place for the students.
I guess one question I have is how much time these are expected to take at each level? So it looks like from the documents that they're starting as early as sixth grade, really doing some of this reflection, and I'm just trying to get a picture in my head of how much time this is. I mean, is this taking up their whole I block, as they're calling it, or, you know, is it just a portion of the year? How much time are you expecting them to put in and parents to put in and?
Well, I think, I think right now, it is a portion of the year, and advisory at the high school is two times a week. I think that as it evolves and becomes more and more a real document, there's also the question of, you know, would you bring out your personal learning plan in the middle of your social studies class to see if you're on track to what you said in terms of the social studies? Those are all kind of evolving pieces, because what we don't want it to be is just something I fill out and then I don't take it out again, you know, for a year.
And use it as.
So how to make these living documents is going to be part of what, you know, is ahead of us.
So not really giving you a specific answer about how much time. It's, hopefully, will be built into their, you know, into their, their planning and their utilization of their, of their tools. Front-loaded, front-loaded more heavily, and then hopefully, as along the way in each upcoming year, it's, it's tweaking, and there's time built into the schedule to allow for, for that.
And remind me what the parent engagement is.
Well, so that's the piece that we have to develop more at this point. This year was basically signatures at the seventh grade.
Yep.
And very little at the high school, and that until the, you know, it's still in the sophomore exhibitions, parents are part of that, but that has to evolve more so that there's more parents up front. You know, as we're, we're just about working together now with the high school and the middle school for this next TLC block, because one of the things will be next year when the eighth graders do it, actually, at the end of eighth grade, they'll really be doing their initial kind of transition to the high school, and at that point, I don't want to call it eighth grade exhibition, because we don't want to duplicate, but there will be some kind of eighth grade thing that involves parents as well as they move to the high school with the kids, which would really be the beginning of ninth grade.
Right. And I'm assuming this helps evolve the process where kids, as they move through the grades and they get higher up, they have more options, that this is informing their options for what classes they want to take, because they've got a plan that's personalized for them.
I think it's a, I do think, I just want to say, I think it's a great opportunity for us to address the issue of.
You know, as kids come into middle school, parents get less and less involved.
Yep.
And feel a little more disconnected from their students' learning, and I think that this would potentially, if used the right way, present a really great opportunity for them to be involved in a positive way that could be, you know.
Yep, good point.
Just working together collaboratively rather than, we're always working against our teenagers. It feels like that sometimes.
I think at the elementary level, there's much more synergy around kind of a support, supported parental guardian network. When they come into the middle school, that, those generally diminish as the students mature. However, this is, as you said, is a nice way to dial into that connection around kind of the future planning of their learning. So I agree. I think it's, it's good. There's also the draft timeline in there that Stuart provided, the overview draft, which I think, you know, takes you through kind of seven through twelve. That's kind of a nice depiction of kind of a personal through compliance pieces that are there as well.
And if you go to the links that we put on, you can see a variety of other documents as well.
So just to refresh my memory quickly, is it the, is it this PLP or A PLP that is required by the state?
It's A PLP.
A PLP.
You get to design the PLP within our own framework.
So do we have a mechanism that's in place to sort of evaluate, this always sounds funny before you even really get started, but to evaluate the efficacy of our, what we've chosen?
Design?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that's part of, one of the pieces, you know, and it's, it's in the report, but there's a point eight position at the high school, basically point two for each grade. The person who will get hired in terms of eleventh and twelfth grade will be planning what that looks like in the coming years, because it'll be freshmen and sophomores next year, freshman, sophomore, junior advisories the next year, and finally, full implementation in 2019. So part of that would be the, the work in the building the job description now of figuring out how to evaluate as we go through the system to make sure that the eleventh grade work is effective and then the twelfth grade work. So we have the staffing, but not necessarily the mechanism yet, Elizabeth, to put it all to place, but that's part of the goal.
And, and would the staffing for that have fallen into sort of an unfunded mandate?
I think so. I think, I mean. Part of that, you could say, should just be absorbed, but it is, it is a new expectation, and kind of correctly implementing that is not without resources. It's not without resources of time of, of our central office, our high school and middle school administration, and also, how do we keep track of this? We're choosing to really make sure that we do it right and keep track of that, and so absolutely.
I'd be interested at some point, when it's appropriate in the future, of understanding from those resources sort of how we're going to evaluate our success with this option. That would be, I think that'd be helpful information.
So how much coordination is done with the agency of education?
Or how much assistance are they providing to, to us? They give us the big, the big deadlines and dates.
David and I were in a meeting with Amy Fowler, and she used the word personal learning plan, right, a couple of times?
So, so none?
Little. We haven't really asked for a lot of, you know, I mean, they've given the guidelines, we're following them, and then, you know, I mean, really trying to build it into our system, so, but less guidelines than, for example, the proficiencies, you know, where there were documents that showed sample proficiencies at the various grade levels and indicators. So those documents were certainly more thorough than what a personal learning plan, you know, might look like.
So obviously, there'll be more time than the point eight from other people involved in the PLP process.
So the, at the, at the high school and the middle school, though, it's, it's present staff, you know, in other words, next year, just like there has been, there'll be freshman and sophomore advisory, and we already have those advisors, but eventually, there will be, you know, freshman through twelfth grade advisory, and so that is, you know, some time from people to do those advisories.
So are you tracking that time? Just because I think that would be another interesting metric to have.
Yeah, as we move forward, but of course, right now, it's still status quo, two days a week.
Right.
You know, for freshmen and sophomores.
Mm-hmm.
So that won't have changed as much, though some of the responsibility, especially the staff in the ninth grade, which have been the SLAM advisories where students have done a lot of, of the leadership through our SLAM leadership, that will still be there, but these kind of PLPs will also be developed, so the teachers will have, you know, more input and more responsibility to make sure that happens, which has not been the case in the past. But I will be able to tell you more about that after it happens next year.
Thanks.
Ready to move on?
Let's, let's. Is there other questions?
This might just be a question out of ignorance, because I have not really been exposed to this process very much, the advisory process. How are students connected with advisors? Who decides which advisor they get, or they all get the same advisor? How does that work? And if it's not working with an advisor, I mean, this is a very personal process, and I know from past experience, you know, if you have a great advisor, something like this can go really, really well, and if you have a terrible advisor, it can be really disheartening. And so how do, how are students connected with advisors and what's the process if it's not working?
So I would have to find out the answer to that question, because I don't do the placement in any way.
Okay.
That would be grain size.
Okay.
Much smaller than.
Okay.
I normally.
Okay.
Touch base with, but I can certainly find the answer for you.
That's good that we can give you more specifics, but generally, it's a scheduling-related matter. All of our staff or teachers will have an advisory assignment, and then I believe, and we can find out, it's more random on the selection of, of advisors based on getting the right mix of adult advisor to student. And, you know, I would, I mean, I want to be sensitive to that it's not terrible. Again, we're looking at good match, and it's important about the staff or the teacher making sure that the, the right messaging is going to the student and allowing the student to have that kind of ebb and flow. Certainly, we recognize that sometimes that happens easier with some advisors who they may have a connection with, but the hope is, is that we, as, as staff are making those connections happen and working hard to develop those relationships, so, and if there are some areas that need improvement, then we're working on that collaboratively is, is my hope and desire, and not, not just saying, can I move, but work on that, so.
And I, I think, you know, the high school certainly could comment a little bit more on those, on those matches and/or what they do when, you know, there's some of those things going on.
And do they stay with the same advisor as they move?
So that is the change in the program. That has not been the case.
Right.
It's been more choice-related.
Okay.
But the goal is that, actually, that the next year's freshman and the group and the advisor will be together all through their senior year. Obviously, if your advisor retires or there are other things that, you know, go on, but that is the general, one of the general changes, so to build that relationship and make it stronger.
Thanks, Stuart.
We gone to the pay structure?
Yep. So John's going to walk you through this. This is, this was a question that the board actually had. Yeah, it's, everybody have it? So this is a question that a lot of you had around pay structure outside of what we would currently, you have negotiated agreements, which, you know, pay structure is associated with that, but when we have our, all of our non-groups, how are we currently paying them? So this is a, this will give you a quick overview of that, and John's going to add nine slides or so, and then open it up for any questions you might have.
We, this came about through the policy monitoring report, two point eight compensation benefits, it was done in October. So that's not referenced on there, I just found that out today, I was going through this with Karen, but a couple things, couple, in the history of the support staff, I found a report that was done in 1979 with the assistant superintendent, two teachers and some teacher aides at that time, and the interesting part of that was they didn't really have many criteria to differentiate the positions. They did have some, some job descriptions, which are always important, but the two things that, from a historical standpoint, the recommended wage is four bucks an hour for teacher aides, and the recommendation from the committee was to offer the aides' health benefits, that the board should offer the aides' health benefits that the employees could pay for a hundred percent. So that was 1979. And then, over time, there was a, there's a memorandum that HR and the superintendent's office, superintendent really, has updated pretty much annually, that gave the conditions of employment. But in 2006, it was the year before I got here, David worked with, well, there was a consultant business manager here, to start a good classification system and redo the work from scratch. So this was, we, we did that work when I got here, and we finished it in June of 2009. So we've been using this similar, the same pay structure since then. So that's my little bit of background. A lot of times, the board members negotiate contracts with the support staff, that's with the parent professionals and custodians, but, and also teachers and, and stumped off business, not business, but building administrators. But I just want to see, have this slide here to show you the variety of employees who the school district, who we employ, to keep things moving, to get kids their education and, and take care of the things behind the scenes. So, you know, transportation employees, bus drivers all the way to the director, the business office employees, you know, it's quite a, quite a list, quite a variety, school psychologists, the athletic trainer, and all these positions are rated. There's job descriptions, and they're rated according to the plan I'm going to show you next. So that's, that's it. I'm not going to read them all, but they're, it's quite varied. And in policy monitoring report eight, the classification system was described, the purchase of the, the purpose of the job classification model is to provide a consistent and objective means of assigning positions to appropriate levels within a hierarchy. And the first step is to have job descriptions current at all times, and that's what we've had Karen Dancher is finishing her third year, and the, the amount of work that she's done to keep these job descriptions up to date and transparent is just been great. I, when we hired her, we talked, I talked about, maybe, I don't know if anybody else did, but our, her HR director was the assistant superintendent at fifteen percent of his time as HR director. So now we have a full-time professional director, and it's really helped our organization. So that's one thing she does. And then this evaluation process we'll keep at, this defines factors. Every job is rated according to some criteria, I'll show you on the next slide. So, and it's basically to see how much responsibility is in that job, how much training is required to do it, how much physical effort is required to do it, and how much accountability there is for budget. So it's quite comprehensive. And we were, we received this, you work with Chittin Central, who had a more robust human resource department ten years ago, to, to help us with this system.
Right.
So, and that's why you need a very good job description to start it out.
So John, let me just, just pause. Again, I, I think, you know, in any organization, what we, what was happening is that there were, there were at times individuals from this group that were coming to us saying that it doesn't seem right, and there would be a, a little bit of a dive and a review of that job description, and this is again, kind of when I first got here, and there would be an altercation, there would be a change to that pay, perhaps, not always, but when that happened, you can imagine what then happens to others, then it puts everything out of skew. So there was a, there was a real need for some, what I would say, some methodologies. Also, I want to not recognize that the district has become more complex over time, too, and we've needed additional positions, some of which we've highlighted in our past budget, whether it's psychiatrists, you know, psychologists, et cetera, that came into our staff, so there was a need to have a system to better do that.
So in the next slide, it shows the rating factors. Minimum qualifications for a job are determined in the job description, so if you're hiring a business manager, there should be certain qualifications, certain education level, certain experience there, and minimum qualifications is a big part. You see, it's 160 points, it's 21% of the whole valuation system. And then, I won't go through them all, but orientation and training, how much time does it take you to get up to speed on your position? That's, you get more points if you get it, if you can do it right away, and, and then complexity of work is also a really significant weighted factor. There's supervision that you have to receive. Are you taking direction daily or hourly, or are you given a project on your own? And supervision exercise also is a big part of it. Contacts, who do you deal with? Do you just deal internally, or are you dealing with the public every day and that kind of thing? So of the, of the, the total number of points is 775. When we rated all the positions way back eight years ago, we, we determined what the grades would be based on how many people we had in certain areas. So grade one was 100 to 150 points. On this, on the scale of 775, that's the lowest, and then grade 14 was 525 points up. So if you rated, if you, let's look at grade six, right in the middle, 200 to 280, 260 to 285, if you were rated at 200 If you were rated at two hundred and seventy-five points, you'd be in grade six. You'd be paid the same as other people in that grade, in that range. On the next, yes?
John, a real quick question here, and, and, and this may be too, too detailed. It surprises me that, like, supervision exercised is weighted the same as supervision received. And that even, like, financial and informational accountability is even less than that. It was there, was the, were the weighting factors taken from some guidelines?
Yes, they were. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't determine that.
We didn't significantly alter the weighted, weightedness of them. You know, this is backed up with some pretty significant rationale. The qualifications, I would say, on, on supervision received or, um, supervision, um, needed, I think were, were factors into the complexity of the work, you know, which is highly, higher rated and the qualifications.
I would say too, and, and maybe you already know this, but I've got something familiar early with a model like this. Supervision received, you get more points for the less you receive because you're more independent. So it's kind of reversed on some of these, which is why the weight.
Maybe it's interpretation, but.
Well, and, and, and part of this, there's a, a very detailed, so, and John and Karen have taken this on. As we have evaluate, we evaluate these based on job description changes on a regular basis. John's actually, you've, you've just finished this series of reevals, right?
Right.
And in some cases, some people will come to us and say, and we don't do this like every time there's an, you know, a one-off request. There's a, a timeframe that we're doing them or they're doing them. But in some cases, someone says, well, you know, my job, this particular portion has changed. And so that may be true, but it doesn't necessarily, as John said, if they're kind of in that two sixty-four area, maybe they are doing some things that are a little bit more because they have more contacts. That's true. But it doesn't mean that it moves you right to the next grade. And so there, and that, and that's been a really help, this has been a helpful tool for, um, you know, for the folks that are, that fall within these areas.
Just to not, once again, show the whole gamut, but just show, um, how it works as far as actual jobs, how, how many points they were, um, they were given. And there's one from every grade except there's two in grade eight, which is, um, just a mistake, but. And it kind of goes along with what you would think intuitively. Someone who's a kitchen helper, that's, that's basically washing dishes and helping set up and that kind of thing. The, it's, it's not that the job is any less important than what I do, really. I don't believe that. But as far as the knowledge and skills needed and the experience, you don't, you need less to do that job. And then you go down through and you can see the payroll benefits coordinator is grade seven, three hundred and five points. Kind of the mid-range job. Some of that is, um, some of that is some daily supervision, some not, you know, it's, it's, um. And then finally down to clinical psychologist was the highest rated position. And, um, the credentials needed there, the, the licenses, that kind of thing, all weighted in. So we think we've done a fair job in rating these positions over time. It's kind of intuitively, it makes some sense. Now, this, the, the interesting thing about this is, this is not the salary, the annual salary for grade one or grade fourteen. It's, we convert every, not everyone, but in schools, we're only in session nine and a half, ten months a year, a hundred and eighty-nine days. So some positions work a hundred and eighty-nine days. Actually, some work a little less. And some work the full, uh, full gamut of two hundred and sixty days. So in order to keep the grades in order, we show their wages on an hourly basis. That's, that's why you see hourly rates there. When we set this up, we had some guidance from the previous superintendent, John Everett, and, um, he pointed out that, the lower grades maybe, uh, he, he suggested anyway that they maybe not go down to twenty steps. And, um, because a person who's in, learned the skills of maybe a step, grade one job, wouldn't have to keep learning as much more as somebody else. But that's, we'll get into it. I think that's one of the weaknesses to this. Another thing, just to point out, is every step, um, you can compare them to other, other grade and step tables you know. Every step only is point four percent difference. So you, you don't get much for one more year of experience. Now, on top of this, the, the schedule, I think the first schedule started out at, um, around ten dollars an hour. So the inflation over eight years, the starting in grade, grade one is now twelve oh three. So there is basically what you consider cost of living applied to this every year too.
One of the things that, you know, that, that's not always easy, and when we go out and do a job description, it's kind of the market values of another position. So we have comparable, we look for comparable data from other districts and, you know, see where we're aligned. And it's also driven on, we can't find anybody, you know, in some cases, um, we're, we're sensitive to that as well. So we still have work to do on this. I have some capacity needs here around, you know, doing that on a more regular basis, the market value checks. I don't want to be in a situation where I'm overpaying or underpaying and not being able to have positions that, you know, we need money for in, in the budget, so.
So is this group subject to overtime?
Uh, some.
And is overtime?
Required to the overtime requirements, yeah? Depends a, a little bit on the position.
Oh, yeah.
So some of these are positions that are at-will positions and some are not. And that, that, this gets a little bit to the, to then the agreement that, that they have with us too.
David just mentioned it, there's issues. One is market factors. Uh, Karen is doing, she's, almost has this done actually, and, and I, it wasn't quite enough to bring to you tonight, but it will be soon. She's looked at every job position against the state of Vermont's Department of Labor to see, um, statistics, to see what the median and then the mean salaries are for these positions. And then the range to see if we're in, in sync or not, so. And that's important because we have recruitment in four different places that's hard. One is for bus drivers. Our, our, our pay, if you go back here, the bus drivers are in this grade four. So they start at just under seventeen dollars. And after, well, I mean, this will change with cost of living, but the range only goes to seventeen sixty-six. So if that doesn't appeal to somebody and health benefits and the other, or package of benefits doesn't appeal to them, then they won't take this job. So that's, that's one area. The next area is food, nutrition services workers. Custodians, and custodians, um, want to clarify, we have, our building custodians, our head custodians in each building are not in the union.
Cost of living increase, I think.
But, so the, everybody else is in the union, but those are not. And it's just hard to hire custodians either way, union or not. And then network engineers, um, that's been the hardest. I think that the position, computer positions, especially in municipal and, and, um, you know, the academic side, the school side, we're nebulous a little bit. I, I remember my days, municipal government, do we really need a IT director? Do we, well, how are we gonna do this? And it's developed over time. And I think our, our wages that we have is, we've had some real experience with not being able to get engineers in here. So that's one thing we're looking at. The step differential of four percent, point four percent each year is, I, I think it was sound because we have these cost containment, um, we're not alone in the state. We're, you know, it's, it's a statewide system. So if the district has funds available, you put it in as a, an adjustment to cost of living more than steps. So that was the, the thinking back then. Another issue I just showed you before, that the steps end between ten through twenty years, depending on the grade. We've had limited resource to analyze appeals. So over time, there have probably been, um, Karen and has, we've gone through and checked it out. I think eighteen people have appealed, uh, thinking they should go up, have more points and get a higher salary. And about half of those, we agreed with, and half of those, we said no to. So, but it takes a long time because, um, well, it's taking less now because Karen's fully trained and, and, and we have one of, another administrator, Joan Godak, knows how to do this too. But we, we need more training and I won't be in the mix, so that's. And then finally, pay different, pay grade differentials between categories is not consistent. I'm gonna go back to this. So if you go from, easiest place to see this is two places. One, if you go from grade two to grade three, the starting is thirteen twenty-six in grade two. Goes to fifteen seventy-three in grade three. The reason for that is we were taking, um, compensation from a group who rated out at grade two and had to kind of figure out, well, how are we gonna move forward with what we have? So grade two seemed to have this kind of range of pay and, and then we could be consistent going forward. So what we're looking at now is, let's skip to the last slide, is maybe putting some, inserting a couple more, um, grades in here where there's a huge differential. So grade two, we go from twelve ninety-five, starting grade two A, fourteen eleven, and grade three is still fifteen thirty-six. You, you can kind of see that. Some, some, uh, grade and step tables are consistent across the board. This is not at all, actually.
So what, uh, what is the basis, um, what are you basing having this additional grade? I mean, is it, I'm not doing a very good job articulating this question. Uh, is it, uh, looking at the competition, what, what the market requires to get people of a certain, um, background, certain ability and such? Is that what's driving having this distinction or adding these distinctions?
It definitely is out here in, in, in the higher grades, yes. Because, um, you can see grade thirteen is thirty-seven sixty-six top, and that was, that was our top IT director.
Okay.
And then you go look at grade, uh, fourteen was our school psychologist.
So it gives, I'm sorry, so it kind of gives a finer?
Correct.
Or, or more, uh, flexibility as far as, uh,
That's exactly right.
Is that kind of how you're addressing the first problem that you had listed as far as for getting IT people? Is that?
Yes, that's gonna be.
Here's what we need to be able to bring in the people. We need to have this new grade.
Right.
Because he doesn't, it's too much for going all the way to fourteen.
Yep.
And we're not getting somebody at thirteen. So is that kind of?
Exactly. We don't, we don't really want to make exceptions because the first exception you make then opens the door that, oh, the system doesn't work. We're gonna make this exception here, that exception there, then we have what we came into ten years ago. So that's, that's the reason.
I guess I'd say a couple other questions if I may ask them too. So what, what are the benefits that are provided? Is it the same benefit for all the different grades?
What do you mean by benefits?
Well, healthcare, let's start with kind of the benefit package.
Yes, healthcare, uh, as long as you work a thousand and twenty hours.
Thousand eighty.
You're eligible.
Okay, there's a certain minimum number of hours. What, what does that translate to as a per week approximately? My, my brain wouldn't handle that math right now.
Oh, I'm not sure, because everyone.
We can figure it out.
I could probably figure, I could, I could figure that one out.
On an, on an employment basis, is that half time? Is that at least half time or is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean the hours?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant to, how much health?
No, 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 no.
Keep that in my head.
No, no, no.
It's about sixty percent, yes.
Okay. And, and what percent, what, uh, is the percentage that they, uh, pay towards the healthcare? Was there a premium?
Seven percent.
Seven percent, okay.
Yes.
And, and for the increase, the annual increase of, on inflation, is that based on the, on what index are we basing the?
Like the CLA?
We, we took the, um.
The consumer price index or is it the New England?
We've been charting what the settlements were from teachers, administrators and, and the other.
Okay, so it's not dr- it's not related to inflation. It's related to what's going on with the others.
Is it, so is it a direct? Like if the teachers get two point nine percent?
No, 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 no.
No?
No, but we've charted that for fifteen years and looked to see, um, and, and we also knew cost containment was coming up this year.
Mm-hmm.
And some of these increases in this group have been pretty low, I mean, maybe compared. So we looked at it all and came up with two point eight percent for this current year.
Okay.
It's not a CPI index because some of these years it's been zero.
Right.
But there's also with, there was an increase of one percent paying for health, so it's.
Right, so those various factors are put in there, right.
And it's analysis more, I would say, because I've been involved from a financial, I know what the, we have to do to get the budget passed. So I'll propose something with, with Hamidi in my office and to David, and that's how it works, has worked.
And, and about how many employees are under this schedule?
Roughly?
I think a hundred and thirty because there's.
About a hundred and thirty?
You have, you have schools out employees, you have, uh, um, the food nutrition services, the bus drivers. In addition to, some of those aren't shown in the general fund, so. I can get you, I'll give you that.
I know it's over a hundred.
I guess one, one final question that, um, as far as the steps, uh, ending at ten, or ending at different timeframes, what's the rationale for? The rationale that John Everett gave seemed pretty convincing to me, so what is the rationale for changing that?
Well, we have, we have, um, uh, might be employee satisfaction. You have, um, some people who've worked here twenty-eight years. And every year, they get point four less than, than everyone else. I mean, that's, that's kind of our biggest complaint in the system.
Well, and I think, I mean, the other point was, the reason we don't dead-end some of them is because there's a requirement for new learning, new qualification and new skill sets. You know, when you look at technology, we don't just stop them at step, you know, at twelve and then nothing after. However, that's, that is somewhat true at, in, in the, in the lower grades. Because once you learn that skill, that skill isn't significantly gonna change. Now, there, there could be, and we've watched that. But we know at the upper end where things are changing on an almost, in some cases yearly basis around, and I'll use technology. We have to be mindful of that and we need people to stay, you know, vibrant. So that, that's in part and play how some of those stopgap measures have been applied.
You know, we've, we've, since Karen's been here, we've kicked around, should we restart the whole process? I mean, there's, there's, um, and I'm not saying there's widespread dissatisfaction with this. We, we don't hear much actually, but because benefits are good, we didn't finish the benefits. If you're, if you're, if you've been here before, uh, two thousand and thirteen is a defined benefit plan. It vests after five years. And if you're after that, it's a defined contribution plan. The district pays in four percent. There's life insurance up to fifty thousand dollars. The employees have to, um, pay a significant amount for dental. Maybe thirty percent of the premium. Life insurance is fifty thousand. I just said that, didn't I? You have to buy disability insurance. So there's, there's, there's a whole variety of.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good package. And, and that, that's another reason why I'd be, I'd really have to be convinced. I don't, I guess part, part of my question is as well is, do we get to weigh in on whether you change to have more steps? I mean, because this is.
But we haven't, we haven't, that's why we're seeing.
Right, right. If we, if we have to weigh in, I, I just think, I, the benefits are very good. And if it's just that they're, after ten years, uh, adding another year, as long as they're, as long as we're somewhat keeping up with inflation, you know, that we're providing that benefit. I don't know. Unless we're losing, I mean, unless we're losing people or we're being unfair to our employees. And if they, and if there is wide.
That's consistent with my experience. In those, in those earlier grades, as we, as I think John Everett was probably trying to explain, you, you've done the learning that you need to do and you've.
to plan, you, you've done the learning that you need to do, and you've maxed out, and, you know, if you were to be really cold about it, he would say, if you left tomorrow, we could hire somebody for this, and do this for this amount of money.
Market replacement.
There's a market comparison piece that you'd wanna do, but...
Right, right. Well, it's not being cold, it's being attentive to the...
To the money, taxpayers' dollars.
No, we're, we're really clear. I mean, part of the job description review process is driven by if, you know, take the name away, if you were to leave today, could we find someone to replace you? And if and when they replace, when you found it, and they read your job description, and it was accurate, or if it wasn't, and it was a lot longer, then it doesn't do us any good service if we're not paying them right, if the job isn't aligned, and they're saying, this is in no way what I was qualified to do, or it's nowhere up to my level. So, I, I think, you know, that this kind of cross-leveling of job description and market values and a pay structure grid that's in context.
Do we have, do we have job descriptions in, so that people can be promoted from a grade two to a grade two A to a grade three, so that if they are progressing in that learning and bringing more value to the organization?
They see it.
That they're not capped at ten, they're capped at whatever the next step is, because they're being promoted through that as a senior or something next further?
Not really.
No?
No.
No, but it does allow the certain transparency, if you say there's a position, you get to see what's in the grade one positions and grade two positions, you don't see who's in them, but you know what the jobs are. Again, obviously, our people are smart enough to...
But it's not a career, I mean, career path.
No, not within the same field. Groundskeeper one versus groundskeeper two.
Right.
Where there's more responsibility, more time.
Exactly.
We don't have that, no.
So then you go, because then you solve this problem by going back to your grading system, saying you've got more accountability, that you've got more judgment, there's less supervision.
Yeah.
Which brings value to the, to the, on both sides, to the employee and to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd prefer to, I'd prefer, I'd prefer to solve that problem, this problem, by using that method than just saying, you've been, you know, you've been here longer, and you're doing the same work.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and once again, to answer your question, I don't know if there would change on this, but we can bring it back here. This is just what we're, wanna give a complete report on, what, what things going on.
We've struggled at times with finding positions. We've had to evaluate where we bring people in. We've done the market value, we've done job description. For the most part, I would say we've been in a pretty steady period for the last five years.
We have a lot of people that are at that final step in the job that they're in?
Yes.
Well, not, not, no. Depends on the categories, right?
I'm not gonna contradict you.
No, no. You're a short timer.
Which is it, yes or no?
You're welcome to, you're here only like another eight years or so.
There were people, when we reclassified everything ten years ago.
Yeah.
We had to put them at grade eight, maybe they'd only been here six years, but they, there used to be a six percent jump in pay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because of that, there's more people at the top of those scales than there probably should be if we'd started from scratch and kept that system all the way through.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's something David wouldn't think about right now.
And are all the job descriptions up to date now?
I, just about, yeah, yeah, they're...
Well, I would say they're all up to date. There are some that are going through a re, a reeval, and we've got those on, and Karen is, we've got those on a reeval.
Cycles.
Cycles. Thank you for the word. So, pay structures, I don't know, again, interesting, some hard work to us.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
So, do, what, what for the board, if anything, is, is, should we expect next on this?
Something that could be talked about and put on your, you know, on your annual work plan, if something you wanna have come back, you don't forget about it, you wanna see as progression goes on. As John said, under two point eight, right, John?
Right.
Is where this came up, on compensation and benefits, which was the trigger.
Yep.
I mean, I might make the recommendation that that just gets included in the, this upgrade, update gets included in the next two point eight, so we're not, we're being conscious of doing the kind of one-off reports.
That next October?
Yeah.
Currently, it is now, yeah.
The only other thing that would be coming is the, the employee manual is, is nearly done, and Karen, Karen would bring that for us, so I'm not sure, but that would come here, so that would, you'd be looking for that.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah, works for me. Does it work for everyone else?
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful. All right. Any other questions or comments on administrative reports? Hearing none. Legislative update. David, do you have anything on legislative updates before we look to our...
Legislature.
Yeah, and I wanna be sensitive to Martin. I mean, I feel like we don't, I don't wanna always plug him on those things. And I also know we have other legislators that are in our city that wanna, would love to be invited to this particular portion, so I think we should be sensitive to them in the future, Martin's colleagues in the legislature. But, I mean, I think what I reported on last time, you know, I don't have a, a more recent update from the, from the last session, maybe you do on the bills that we reported on last week or the week before.
We're getting into the, as far as I can tell, the silly season. I mean, we're coming towards the end, we only have a few weeks left, but it'll be interesting to see what comes out. The House Judiciary passed out a significantly watered-down marijuana bill on Friday. We'll see what happens with that. I mean, it's, there's not really much else to really report. New things since last report on the education side either. So there we go. Was that short enough?
Highlight it, thank you.
Before we move on, as far as other legislators in this area, what's, what would you suggest is the right format? Because obviously, we've got this on here every time we meet, so a formal invite, what would look like what?
Well, we, we actually...
We do the breakfast occasionally.
We put it on here just as a, kind of, as an, I think, an important placeholder, and it's been, we've had some pretty significant activity, pretty significant activity going on, and that's really the rationale for putting it on here. I don't know that it needs to reoccur. We could perhaps schedule it in a way that, you know, particularly on, I think the Wednesdays are hard, though, for legislators to get here.
Right.
That's, that was really the impetus for the legislative breakfasts. But we could always ask for, you know, the first meeting or quarterly or something, we're gonna have legislative updates, and let our other legislators put a little snippet together and run it by us.
Yeah, I think, I think during, for me, during the legislative season, I think we wanna have this as a standing item to keep our eyes on what's happening. Outside of that, I agree, it's probably not a standing item.
But we could ask, you know, and we have not, and I, I know, I've gotten a few emails like, hey, we, we, you know, we would like to also weigh in, and they know Martin weighed in, and they watched the, your, they watched RATN, and they said, well, we would like to be able to weigh in too. So I think we could reach out and say that we either are gonna keep it on there, and anytime you'd like to do a snippet, send it, you know, to a board rep or to me, and we, and we kind of give an update on things that maybe you're wanting or we're watching. But I'm, I'm just sensitive, although I'm sensitive to Martin, I mean, he's...
Right.
It's not necessarily, we put the load on him, like, give us the update on everything, and he doesn't necessarily, he's not able to cover the whole legislative, all bills, you know?
He looks pretty relaxed in there, leaning back.
Well, I'm just, again, I'm just...
Thank you for your consideration.
I think it would be a good practice to, during the, the two sessions, to maybe at least reach out to the other representatives once each session to, or at least one of the sessions, to include them on the, on the agenda formally.
When you say one of the sessions, meaning?
Meaning the fall or the spring, basically.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think it's important, I think, I think it was helpful at the beginning of this last biennium, that we really paid some attention to this in November and December, and had a position paper. I don't know how much of what we pushed for actually came to pass, but, but I think that it was helpful for guiding, not just me, but the other legislators, and VSBA for that matter, so...
Yeah, I think if, if we think that there's something under this update that we are kind of really planning on talking about and we're proactive about it, reaching out and letting them know that would be entirely appropriate. But most of this is not, not planned active conversation until we hear what the update is. It's a little hard to be proactive. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll definitely be mindful, and I'll work with David to try to, if we, if we think we wanna tackle something into this category, we'll reach out to people.
I, I think, I think at minimum, it'd be good just to reach out to the, the others, just to say, we've had the conversation, and we're trying to be...
Yep.
...sensitive, and maybe they have some ideas too, you know?
Well, I think before, we've had a couple legislative breakfasts during the session. We haven't this time, for whatever reason, just couldn't get scheduled.
That would be something to take up at the city school meetings, to schedule those.
Good suggestion.
If there's nothing else on that category, we can move on to the master planning and visioning update. So we had a little bit of planning conversation on Monday about the upcoming meetings, and I think we've also, I know a couple of board members have talked to me about, you know, where we are in the process, and I think we wanna have a little bit of a conversation about the five options that are on the table right now, and discussion about the validity of those moving forward, where we stand today. So, I'll open up the, the opportunity for discussion on that topic.
And I, I don't want, I don't wanna bump in, I mean, we certainly have other meetings currently planned, just the staff meetings, I reported on those, again, giving kind of a thirty-minute quick overview of the information in kind of short version of the educational opportunities and the Whiten Burke work. That's happened now at Orchard, Rick Marcock, and Tuttle. Tuttle was this morning, and we have the high school on the twenty-seventh, library patrons on the twenty-seventh as well in the afternoon, senior citizens group on May eleventh, Chamberlain's, I'm out of order, April twenty-fifth, and the South Burlington Business Association has requested the opportunity on May seventeenth in the morning. And would, they have also requested if Whiten Burke could be present. And again, I've made no, I've made no promises thus far on, on the SBBA specific to the Whiten Burke.
Right, okay.
Felizette?
Go ahead.
Are they looking for the district to fund Whiten Burke's presence?
They, they just had simply said they would love to have, they would like to have Whiten Burke accompany the, the presentation, so they could ask some questions specific to the, the financials.
What fund is that?
And not, not, did not bring up compensation, nor, nor did I ask, you know, are you willing to pay for it?
Yeah, I mean, just as an aside, I'm not sure we're prepared as a district to fund our consultant to go out to other groups, but...
And Whiten Burke has been very clear that they don't go out and make promises to, to anybody. They have come right back and said, squarely in the, in the school board's purview.
Well, we'll come back to that one, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I mean, I could throw out an idea that I've, I've talked to individuals about for, for proceeding. I, I guess, I mean, we've, we've now had the task force report, we've now had Whiten Burke presentation, we've had the presentation from the administration of the various educational benefits, and it seems to me that we're at a, we're at a point where we can start narrowing. Just the, the scale of what the benefits are versus what the costs are, is that I just don't see, at least, I'm not convinced or close to convinced that that scale balances out so that we would, down the road, choose either option four or option five. And I, at this point, don't see that there's information that could be forthcoming that could change significantly that scale, unless, of course, the UVM feasibility study, all of a sudden, they come up with thirty, forty million dollars they're gonna give us for a new facility, and that seems highly unlikely. So, because we're having three meetings with the community, I'd rather, you know, certainly keep it open for them to comment on everything that we're doing, but, but I'd like to be as transparent as possible and explain that really the most viable options that are on the table at this point, that we really wanna focus some input on, are the first three options, the status quo, the status quo with upgrades, and, and closing one school and consolidating into two. I'm, you know, again, completely open to being convinced that I'm wrong about what I've seen over the last almost two years, as far as the other options, but would like to have the community understand that that's kind of the direction we're heading, or I could call it the preferred alternative, or the more likely alternative, to really start hashing out what those options are, rather than spending a lot of time on talking about the pluses and minuses to having one very large school, when that scale just doesn't seem like we're gonna get to that particular option. So, that's kind of, yeah, I throw that out for discussion purposes, and if that's a possible route to go, going into these next three community meetings.
Yeah, I think, Martin, I mean, I feel similarly, that as we've gone through the process, I mean, I, I know we specifically called that out at the March twenty-second meeting, that the board hasn't really identified any preferred alternative at the, at that point. I think, having had an opportunity to look at the Whiten Burke analyses to, and then, like you said, weigh those against the, the proposed educational quality improvements, I, I feel similarly that the, the, I, I don't wanna be disingenuous when we go to the community meetings around where, I, I know where, I'll speak for myself, sort of where I would be leaning at this point, and what I'm, I, I'm balancing, trying to preserve the integrity of the process that we started with, and get feedback from the community, and, and really participation and collaboration. And, you know, from day one, I'm, I'm digressing a little bit, but from day one, I think we got questions early on whether the Saxon Partners proposal had initiated the conversations around school configuration, and, you know, it hadn't. It certainly accelerated conversation, and, and I, I've become convinced that, over time, that it's really difficult to have a vision-setting conversation when it relates to school configuration, when things are going really well. So, so I, I appreciate the fact that the conversation did get accelerated, because there are, there are elements going on, or symptoms of, if I, if I look at it like a medical condition, it's like, you know, okay, your blood pressure's up, and, you know, so if it's like, okay, enrollment's declining somewhat, and the cost per pupil is rising, and the tax burden on our community is pretty significant. So I think the symptoms are there to evaluate options, but in terms of being persuaded that the offsetting educational quality improvements or student outcomes really justify something that might be a little bit more phased in as the, as the first three options might be, I, I feel like that would be a conversation in the upcoming community meetings that would really keep the momentum going forward, but put some guardrails around what I think, you know, can also be some pie-in-the-sky type conversations, and how would that happen? And what does that mean? And so, you know, that's a long-winded comment, but I, I do feel very similarly at this point.
Let me just add one other thing, then, careful of the folks, is that I think it's completely legitimate for the process, for the board, for the decision-makers, even though if we're gonna sell something, we're not the ultimate decision-makers, I understood. But if you've gotten to a point where you have a preferred alternative, or you can probably safely say, these two are unlikely, I, I don't think that, I think that helps the process rather than hinders it. I mean, it makes it, you know, more transparent, more honest, that this is where we're focusing, and this is where we need more input, as opposed to spending a lot of time, you know, again, we're open to hearing about those, but this is where we are, and this is our preferred direction. It would be nice if we had, you know, one preferred alternative, but I don't think I'm there yet. I have three that I'm, I'm very open to still, so, you know.
I agree. I, I, I agree. I feel like, you know, it, there's just too many things going well in our schools, if, if you can say too many. I think we do so well already, and I think the price associated with doing... if, if you can say too many. I think we do so well already, and I think the price associated with doing options four or five is just too high for the taxpayer, and I'm not sure the benefit that we get in return for that is going to be worth it. So I agree with that, and I, I, you know, I think, I don't think any of us really knows what education's going to look like, even in the short term. You know, and I, when I say that, I think like ten years out, and I think we always have to be willing to continue to look at change, and I, I know this board's going to have to do that as we move forward, particularly in the high school. I, I maintain my feelings about little kids. I really think little kids could be educated in a barn and be perfectly fine because what matters is what we do inside the building, not so much what the building looks like. But I think, I think we should look more carefully at the high school, and I think we need to look at one, two, and three.
I wholeheartedly agree. I, I have to say, coming into the process as a new board member, I really expected that we would get information back from the Whiten Burke process and the, the financial modeling process, and that there would be a giant cost savings somehow for the, the consolidation options. I would have thought that there would have been a lot of efficiencies, and that we would be having a conversation about a trade-off between saving the taxpayers' money and keeping open these three schools that, that everyone loves, and that's not the conversation based on the information that we have. I did speak to Elizabeth the other day, and I did like her idea, which she alluded to a little bit in her comments, of, of having some process, some things that we're monitoring as we go forward that say, okay, maybe we are getting to the point where we do need to reopen a conversation about changes, you know, if we really do see vastly declining enrollment or, you know, some other things that we can talk about at a later time, you know, that would be things that we should monitor going forward. But, but I would agree at this time that if we stepped back and really start to focus more on one, two, and three, we can get more granular on those three options instead of spending a lot of time discussing things that people are concerned about with options four and five. And I still think there, there are going to be a lot of concerns from the community, I think, still about option three as well. But we can spend a lot more time focusing on exactly where we want to allocate our resources and what the upgrades might be to the high school and the middle school and the elementary schools. And, and I would really like to see us, you know, at some point pivot to really the vision for what the education looks like. Because while we are doing really well, I do think we need to be thinking long-term about what it looks like inside the classroom as opposed to the configuration of the schools. So the sooner we can sort of move that process along and sort of refocus on what's happening in the classroom, I think the better off we'll be as a district.
So I'll just say that I, I can't disagree with anything that all of you have said. I, I do think that the information right now is not compelling for those two options. My, the only caveat that I would kind of add to what's already been said is that, you know, what we, I think we're looking at, or at least one of the things that I was looking at is, there's an oppo, there's a potential opportunity in front of us, at least right now, but with some of the city center things happening, where the values of our properties may be at a peak for some reason. I'm not sure that's a true statement, but that's a scenario. And the question is, in twenty-five years, when our, when these buildings are seventy-five years old, will we have, looking back, saying that was the opportunity that we should have taken? Because the quality of our education and the quality of those buildings might deteriorate over time if we don't take some action. And we may, you know, we could monitor things and take action down the road, but there's, there was this little gleam in my head that there, this might be the opportunity, from a fiduciary point of view, not necessarily from an education point of view, that we would want to take, take the opportunity on. I'm not sure that exists at this point with what we've seen, but I would, I would kind of ask that David take a little bit of time and, and look at some of those educational value things that we've talked about, and see if we can get a little more detail on those. Still moving forward with, what I think the consensus of the board is that those are no longer likely options, but I wouldn't want to completely abandon what I think is a little bit more work that needs to, we need, I would like to see before we completely put those down.
Well, and I think that the work on the educational options as well, or the educational benefits, is relevant regardless of which option we choose. Because some of those things, particularly when we keep talking about inequities or, you know, things like that, those are things that need to be solved, you know, and, and I don't think that we necessarily need a new building to solve those issues, but we need to better identify them so that we know exactly what they are, and we can move forward towards addressing them.
That's fair.
Yeah, I mean, the process has certainly highlighted some of the issues and some of the areas that we could look to improve. I think, for instance, we should plan on revisiting how we might get language back into the elementary schools. We had that consideration, I don't know, four or five years ago, but it was really not a very good financial time. You know, who's to say that next year's budget's going to be any better, but it's something we should, it's, it's a time to revisit that.
I think there's, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think similarly, within, I won't even call it inequities, I think there's best practices that are being developed at individual schools that, you know, I know administration does a good job now sharing those, but maybe, you know, being a little more planful about how to implement best practices. And, and then there's a question of, and I'm jumping ahead, but when we put together, within the frequently asked questions, there's really good, answering these questions would inform any option, put it that way. So I think some of this will come out through that, too.
Okay. So let's move to the frequently asked questions, then.
Why don't I set it up, and maybe you can add to it, Bridget? So Bridget and I got together, and this was supposed to be very easy, subject to a lot of interpretation. We kept all the categories that we initially had identified, but let me, and added a couple. Let me revisit those. So we have community impact as a category, student-family impact, fifth grade at the middle school as a category, high school first as a category, cost-benefit analysis, and process and changes to options as a new category. So what we did is, we went through, I, I don't know if we could assign a percentage, but I would say probably at least sixty percent of the co, of, of comments written down were actually more comments versus questions. So what we actually spent quite a bit of time trying to do is figure out what the question was within the comment. So this was our best effort within each of the categories to identify a, a list of questions that represent frequently asked questions, and where there's a subset or an example needed, we tried to fit that in as well. I'm not sure it makes sense to read through them out loud now, but do you want, do you want to add to that, Bridget?
And I would just say, you know, some of these, because we were trying to get at, we're trying to limit the number of questions so that we didn't have five pages of questions to answer, but we were trying to capture as much as we could in terms of people's comments and thoughts in these questions. Some of these are very broad, and some of them, you know, I think a portion of them we'll be able to answer, and a portion of them we'll have to say this would require further study, and that would be subject to what we get in terms of feedback from the community, in terms of how much more they want us to put into the process. So for example, I mean, an example of that would be, you know, what would be the impact of, on students' transportation? You know, what, how much time they're spending on the bus, that kind of stuff. That would require actual study, probably money put into it. If, if people don't want us to move forward to do that, then we shouldn't do that, and we'll have to say for now, we don't know exactly what that would be, but we can put some parameters around it, probably. Some of them are very specific ones that we can certainly answer, you know, for example, why can't we just close one school but keep the fifth grade in the other two schools? And that's very clearly a capacity issue, and it just wouldn't work. So there are some that are very simple to answer. There are some that we're going to have to do our best, I think, and then, and some that we'll just have to say, we'll have to table that for further work. But most of them, I think, we have some kind of answer to, but there might be some that require further study. And then, of course, in the cost-benefit analysis, too, we also have to be careful, some of them do get right to, you know, it would be a, you know, a breakout of, you know, what we assess the property values to be, and it's things that we actually cannot share, so we just have to be careful about sharing as much information as we possibly can without sort of infringing upon those property values and things that have to remain confidential.
So then, and the next step is going to have to be to start drafting some answers, right?
I remember Martin offering to do all of that work.
I believe he did.
Well, I guess maybe an interim, an interim step, an interim's...
Yes, maybe.
An interim step is that, you know, this didn't really get circulated until today. An interim step would really be for us to skim through it and make sure that we all agree that these are really the frequently asked questions, or whether some of them can be eliminated, or whether we missed some, especially in light of this discussion tonight about options four and five. We might want to focus in on the ones that really get to options one, two, and three. But I think there probably is that interim step of everyone reviewing them thoroughly and saying, I agree or disagree with, you know, this question being in here. And then, I think, probably assigning buckets to different people would be the fairest way to do it.
So right now, we don't meet again until May?
I was just going to say, can we, is there a way for us to do that online?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
Create a Google Doc, and you can work on it that way?
Well, we can't work on it together.
You can't, but you can populate your, you can have a signed box if you want.
So why don't we start with, people review this document along with the raw comments, and get back to David if they have any concerns about the questions not being the right questions as a first step. Can we jump ahead with the assumption that those are going to be tweaks and not overhauls, and maybe assign categories to anybody that wants to try to help answer these? Or do we want to still go through the, do we want to do that, review the document, and then maybe prioritize which questions we try to spend time answering based on the conversation we just finished a second ago?
My, my, I'm sorry.
Well, go right ahead.
I mean, I think the read, as Bridget said, is, I think, a, a good one. I think you probably, most of you could say, I think this is one that would be the board, and you could put a label, a board response. This is one that could be administrative or superintendent. This is likely one to be administrative and business manager. This could be a Whiten Burke, you know, and that, I think, would help. You know, then, then you all could see that and say, well, it's kind of a Whiten Burke, but I think we could answer it first, and if, you know, whatever. So I, I think kind of those buckets is, somebody alluded to, doing it that way could help expedite kind of the responses and allow people to get to work on some of those. So again, label, share, agree, and start to work on.
Does that work for people?
All right.
So basically, the, your first step is to review it, make sure you're comfortable with it, and then while you're doing that, put in, I think the group you think is the best group to answer that question, send those back through to you. You'll summarize and send it back out, and where there's conflicts, is it, people comfortable with it? Because we're not meeting again until May fourth, at least David and I take a shot at trying to rectify anything that we think is a conflict and do our best and get some things moving.
Yep. My other question is whether we want to, once we've kind of decided what the questions are, whether we want to post just the questions just so people know that these are the ones that we're working on, because I, I hate to leave it until, you know, May to actually get some answers up there, but, and whether we could start to populate it as we all agree. I don't know if we could agree by email, you know, that this answer's okay with me to go on piecemeal as opposed to waiting to try. This is a pretty lengthy list of questions. I would hate to just wait until all of them were answered to everyone's satisfaction to start getting information out there.
Yeah, I, I have no, personally, I have no objections to posting the questions sooner rather than later, along with the raw data.
Similar to that, I was going to ask if we, once we agree on the questions, if these couldn't be shared in the community meetings, at least prior to answers being populated and, and even after. But I, actually, I think many of these questions would prompt some good conversation, and we might, I know we, we're talking about, I don't have the agenda for the community meetings in front of me, but these could be good prompting questions, too.
Yeah, and I guess as far as the questions for the community, just like quick review of this, is we may want to, there may be some additional new inquiries if we really are focusing on options one, two, and three. Because I think when I look through this, it's really reflects more of the controversy or the questions with respect to the consolidation into new school, into essentially number four and five. So we may, yeah, this may not be frequently asked questions because it's not from the community. It's, it's ones that we want to have some focus on at the community meetings. It's like, what, what do we want to hear from people?
I do, I mean, yeah, I, I don't disagree that some of these came out of more geared toward the options four and five, but I, I think a lot of, as I'm looking at it now, I think a lot of it's still pretty relevant to all the options.
So do we have a, like a date by which you want us to approve these questions or have issues with them?
So if our goal would be at least to try to have them posted and available for our first meeting with the community, that's April twenty-sixth. We have yet to pose the question to the board whether or not we want to try to squeeze one more meeting in next week to make sure we're all set for that meeting, but if we back into that date...
I thought you asked that.
I said, I said on Monday I was going to ask on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said.
I think you said, yes, we should definitely get together.
I think you said something about you'll miss us if you don't see us every other day.
Or every day in this week's case.
So I'm just trying to back into that. So if we, if we all get feedback to David, and then David and I have a chance to review it for anything that, we've got multiple, we've got multiple people saying there should be different groups answering the questions, rectify that. That shouldn't take about a day or two. So can people review this in the next couple of business days?
Pine on.
By, by Monday or Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, yes.
Monday or Tuesday next week?
Yeah, by Monday.
By Monday?
Sure.
All right.
We're done?
Yeah, you guys are all, you could have assigned a category if you want to answer it, though.
Benefit of a subcommittee.
That's what you... Okay. All right, so that's the frequently asked questions part of that. The next part is probably just going to recap where we stand with those community meetings and their structure. The way we left that, that, we were going to start with a introduction, a short overview of kind of all the material that we presented at the March twenty-second meeting in summary form, a Reader's Digest copy of that. And I think we also talked about any questions that we were able to pull out and already answered by then to, to, to speak to those as well. And there was something else that I didn't write down that we also wanted to cover in that introduction. Oh, the, what is the, the, what are the upgrades in more detail than just upgrades?
Yeah, to the high school and middle school.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then we were, I do have that note. We talked about, I have notes about educational value conversation and equity-related conversations. Are those still things we want to try to spend a good amount of time on in that conver, in that first twenty minutes?
If we have significant data that we can share, that's, that's different, I think, that would be good. But if we don't, then I don't know how much more we can say in those first twenty minutes than what was said in the last meeting.
That's fair. Okay, so I'll, I'll work with you to see if there's anything that you think is reasonable that we can expand on, on the educational value by like the middle of next week so that we have an opportunity to share it with the board in enough advance of the meeting. If not, then we'll just, we'll do that Reader's Digest, and then we'll move into the breakout tables. I mean, the only, the only alteration to the introduction at this point is going to be the same information, but then with the caveat that the board is leaning towards one, two, and three, and see four and five as unlikely. Is that fair?
Right.
All right. Who's doing the introduction?
Chair always does the intro.
I think the chair gets to do the introduction. I, I think we can split it up among the three schools. I mean, we can, three of us can...
Take a turn, take turns?
Take a turn.
That's fair. I like that answer better than Julie's answer.
I'll, I'll take the Orchard one if nobody else wants it. I'm not going to be ready.
Isn't that a conflict of interest?
Yeah, I know. I was just going to say.
I was thinking that would be to my benefit. You can mix that, you can.
I'm happy to do any one of those. I'm happy to do any one of those, doesn't matter to me. Does anybody have a preference, if, if somebody else does want to do one? I don't think we have to, if nobody just wants to.
I'm, I'm not at the Saturday morning one. It was a conflict with me.
That's Central. Is that the one?
That's Rick Markot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a possibility that I might not be...
That one has a little bit, that, we've heard a little bit of some...
That was my conflict, too.
Questions on that, because it's Mother's Day weekend?
It's Mother's Day weekend, it's also Greenup Day, there are, like, three other things that are going on that day. It's gonna be a challenge, I think, to get people to come to that one.
Then I'll definitely volunteer to be the introduction. I'll do the introduction on that one, no problem.
Middle, oh, it's the middle school musicals.
It's that weekend, yeah.
And I might not be, I might be at the legislature that day, might be the last day of the session, so...
All right, so why don't we do this? Unless anybody has an objection, I will, I feel a little bit obligated to at least do the first one as the chair, so I'll write up the notes and do Chamberlain, and if we think Rick, Rick Markot's not gonna be material, I'll just, I'll do that same thing, no point in having somebody else get all prepped for it, and then you can do...
I'm happy to work with you on the...
Yeah, I would expect so.
I mean, there is a lot of conflict, but it might work for people to be able to come to that meeting, because you posted it.
This weekend, yeah.
So, it may be that somebody, you know, that works best for them, because it is a Saturday.
So, the, so the real, the real challenge on that one's gonna be, if we have a number of the board that are not gonna be there, the, the next step, which is those breakout tables facilitated by board members, is gonna be a little challenging, if we have anybody, any kind of capacity.
You'll have administrators.
Not, not to bring that up, but I know, when I was in conversations with Delina, there were two Saturdays up for grabs or being discussed, and I was the only one who couldn't make the one Saturday, so it was, I didn't realize there might be other conflicts, or, at least at the time, there weren't other conflicts.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's...
I think I said, "Maybe," to that one.
I think I did, too.
Because it's just not in my control.
Well, you can go, you can go and...
I think we'll just have to manage it.
Yeah.
That's really all we can do, and if we don't have enough people to do it, we'll just do it in a general session, because if, we're not anticipating a large crowd, I think we can manage it.
Right, right.
I have, I have the administrators coming to all of them.
Okay.
And, and again, I'm not 100, I mean, there may be some conflict that some of them have, but right now, they're coming, including that Saturday. So, again, we can, kind of, play that by ear and use them as the, as a resource if needed.
Sounds good. So, I'll just say, for the sake of the fact that there, this is on our ETM, the first one is April 26 at Chamberlain School at 6:30. The second one is May 7 at 9:00 a.m. at Rick Markot, and the third is Tuesday, May 24 at 6:30 at Orchard School. As far as the breakout tables, I, I think, from a pure logistics perspective, I think we're obviously relying on the administration and your resources to make sure those are all...
We'll line them up.
Ready to go and...
A location, yeah.
Get the physical place done.
Yep.
And we'll utilize, I think largely, the, the Q and As that we come up with as any talking points, and we can, kind of, cherry pick from those if we, they're not all necessarily appropriate for the one through three conversation. Pretty good on our feet in that regard. Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else on master planning and visioning? Oh, we do have to come back to the Whiten Burke question. So, the, my understanding is that if we utilize Whiten Burke in any of these formats, we're obviously paying them for that, so I think we just need to, I think we've decided previously that we'd like to have them as a resource in that, in that room, and we can definitely do that, but that's, that's gonna cost us money every time we do it. And I think this, I think the Business Association, I may have seen one email that suggested that they're willing to pay for it on their own if they have her, but I think there's still an awkwardness about that situation if we're not utilizing Stephanie in all these other forums, but suddenly she's speaking to this group. That would, that would seem odd.
So, should we have her, plan on having her at the Chamberlain and just essentially see how that goes and then decide on the other two? That's one option.
And I think that's probably fair, and David, you, I think you suggested that some of your team is feeling pretty comfortable with some of that data at this point as well?
Yeah, I mean, they're clearly, John primarily and Annette have worked side-by-side with Stephanie. That's, does, I don't, they're not real estate investment advisors, though, so...
Right.
The model, I think, there's some level of comfort with, I wouldn't say complete comfort, but I also think that if there are questions that come in, you know, we're gonna handle that in a similar format to what you're doing now, which is, you know, we don't know, and we'll have to, that won't be added to the questions, or we'll come back. So, certainly, you know, you can have her at the first, but then somebody might say, "Well, how come, you know, I was hoping that, that Whiten Burke would be there for the, for the Orchard one, and so that's why I came to that."
I propose not having her there, because we can always, if we can't answer with Annette and John, we can get back to people.
And I know she had a conflict on the 7th as well.
Right.
So, I mean, that's a little unbalanced out of the gate.
So, is, so we will not have her at the meetings that we're hosting, and we would ask her to, you know, get back to the Business Association and say, "We really, you need to really work through the school board to have a presentation?" I really, she can't, we, we ask her not to do it directly?
Right, I, I just think we need, she's gonna be clear that she takes her direction from the board.
Right.
We need to respond to the South Burlington Business Association and say, I'm assuming you need to answer this, is, are you, are you interested in doing on May 17? If so, whom? And, and in what format do you want to do that? And do you want to present, obviously, some of the information that Whiten Burke had provided, and do it similarly, essentially, in an information session to them, updating them?
So, do we want to add one more to our list of three, and have that be the Business Association?
My only worry with that a little bit is that, you know, like, you know, I, I've reached out to people who wanted, I said that publicly, so the library patrons, the senior citizens, you know, are two others, although the, South Burlington Business Association is, in fact, an association, so, yeah.
I need to take myself out of this conversation, but...
Understood.
No, I think they're, they're important, uh...
Well, we identified business owners in our demographic identification.
Do we know what time, that's a Tuesday, what time their meeting is?
Early morning. They meet at 7:30, and I think, you know, it's, I think there's, like, an hour, a little less than an hour.
What, what's the date?
It's gonna be more like 30 minute, May 17, 7:30. I thi, I think they've identified about 30 minutes in total, really, for, kind of, presentation question, answer. Not that they couldn't stretch a little bit more. I have not gotten back. John Wilking was the one who had emailed.
I'm, I'm confused where we were landing on that one. Were we gonna say we would support Stephanie being there if, but not fund it? I'm, I'm...
I didn't hear that.
I, I thought what we were talking about was whether the, the school board was gonna do one more presentation.
Oh, gotcha.
And it would be on, to that group.
I could do that.
We should be very open to doing the presentation to them, or anybody that wants to do it. Would be my view.
And the 17th, I believe, is a Tuesday, so that works for me. I could certainly be there for that one.
That works, that works for me.
Yeah, I could be there as well, but I guess we...
You guys are gonna be all done by then, right?
Yeah. I'm just about done now.
That should probably be a warned meeting, then, if everyone's going.
I don't know.
Well...
Yeah, certainly if everyone is, but I don't...
We can decide.
I will probably not be there that day. But that's not, I don't, my, my, my meetings are full that day already, I don't think I can get out, but...
Even though you're there, you're not there as a school board member at all, I mean, school board member, right?
Right.
But she's still there, so...
I'm still there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It would, if you, it'd be fine, we just warn it. We'll warn it as a meeting if more, more than two of you are going.
Okay.
So, it sounds like three of you for sure, Bridget, Martin, and Julie, no Patrick.
And I don't know yet.
Yeah, so...
Have to check.
It's fine. So, I can get back to, I can get back to John Wilking, let him know that it's a go, but not on the Whiten Burke.
Thank you very much. Anything else on master planning and visioning?
Last question is just about feedback forms. Are we keeping the exact same form that we had for the community meeting, just for consistency? And we'll just, sort of, make a comment when we're presenting...
Think a really clear comment.
A really clear comment, that five is your top choice, and one is your least favorite choice. And then, I guess, my question is also about the meetings that David's having. Are we gonna start getting feedback forms from those, or we need some way of being able to...
Yeah, so I, I have not handed out the feedback forms. Again, these have been very abridged versions. I've attempted to do them in 30 minutes. I've averaged about 35. This morning was about 33 minutes, start to finish, with a few minutes of question and answers. And I have not handed out feedback forms. I've only asked for email-specific questions, and I have not received those. So, I'll push a little bit more here in the next couple of days on those that I've had, particularly the schools that I've visited, that I would, you know, again, a reminder of questions, and I'll push that through the administrators. Again, good questions that came out of the meetings, although, you know, there's still, you know, there's a lot, lot to digest, although I think most of them have been watching and listening. You know, it's, they, a lot of them have prefaced some of the, the dialogue in the community and through parent conferences and things like that, so...
Is, is there a way to email the feedback form out and just see what comes back?
Yeah, I can. I, I, again, I have been, my desire was to, to ensure that there was communication, you know, closure for people that, you know, were out communicating to the public, and I just felt like it was important that the staff had the opportunity to get, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of the same, and, so that we didn't get, you know, down the path too far and them not being, feeling included. Not that they can't come to, they couldn't have come to the meetings either, so... But I think I can, Elizabeth, so the answer, I, if the board's okay with that, I'm happy to send that out and say, for those that I've talked to, this is a form that I think may be helpful to you. Please fill it out, return it.
It's anonymous, and, well, it might not be with email, but...
Or, and they could maybe drop it in a box or something in the main office at their school and have them collect it or something.
Happy to do so, it's good.
I'm, I'm a little concerned, as we're talking, David, that presenting, I, I can't remember what the abridged version is, but given that there are data presented from administration that, sort of, rank the options from an educational quality standpoint, I don't wanna set up a dynamic where if the, if the board's messaged at the community meeting's gonna be, there's, sort of, a, three preferred alternatives that are gonna be moving forward, that there's a disconnect there. So, I, I guess, I, I guess I'd just bring that up to say, you know, I don't know how you want to address that at this point, but it's, it's really the, your focus with the administrators has been on the educational quality. The board's really been charged with weighing in the financial side, so it, it might be worth just explaining that on a going-forward basis. I, I don't know, I'm just...
No, I, I think your point's right, and, and those of you who've been with, I've, kind of, stopped my portion of the presentation, and I, I think it's important for, at least you folks, to know that, I mean, I, I didn't, we didn't get all of the, I didn't get the financials until pretty much to the end, and I think, as your superintendent, I want to be really clear that I'm financially astute and mindful to how to move things forward, but that my charge was to look at educational opportunities, albeit what we have right now, I've shared as excellent, but yet, looking at the, the five options, which I was asked to do. Now, if I had to put those in rank order and, and put cost-benefit analysis, that would be very different. I didn't have those things. So, I feel like sometimes there's a, there's an easy and quick divide with, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for the most expensive option. Well, that's, I, I evaluated the scenarios based on the education, not on the cost.
Right.
So, I think, to Elizabeth's point, that was my charge. The charge that the board asked of Whiten Burke was the financial modeling to look at, and here we are. And that's pretty much the pause, you know, I think that, that I've been walking into.
I guess, one thing that would still be valuable, if it's something that you have available, is, is the, essentially, the, you gave us, kind of, the rankings, you, you said that option five's better than option one through four on this particular factor, but we never really understood, well, in the scheme of things, how much better?
Yeah.
I mean, is it significantly better, it just is better, but, but these are all fine? I, I think that, that is still valuable information for the community to understand.
So, I'll do something.
If, 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 if that's something that...
Yeah, no, and actually, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna show it, but I, but I have some things here that I think will help provide some clarity to that, Martin. And it's not nothing new, but it's just, I think, caps, you know, encapsulating it in a more succinct way for you, and I'll share it with, with Pat, Patrick, and you can then consider whether you want to use those, kind of, couple slides or summations in your 26th, your first presentation.
Yep. Let me pause here, see if there's, I'm sorry.
Or, and again, I, I'm available to you, too, if this is a total board, or if you want me to do an excerpt of that, or not, or you want to do it. Again, I'm, I'm really, I'm really fine with that.
Okay. We're just gonna pause, see if there's any community feedback before we move on.
I just want to give you all a hug for saying you don't totally want to push forward or in thigh. It's just like a really big, like, feels like I can breathe for, just like, five minutes right now, and it's just so nice, so I really appreciate you just saying that you're thinking that you might be leaning towards one, two, or three, and I'm just, kind of, interested how that's gonna play out going forward into these community meetings to, you know, now, I think I understand it better now that David has, kind of, said, like, you know, he was looking at it from this way and this way, but I think now, we just need to, kind of, understand, like, if we're going to these meetings, what do you want from us? Do you want us to now weigh in on one, two, and three, or do you want us to? I, I'm just not quite sure what we're gonna be doing at these meetings going forward now, because I think we've all been very, very clear how much we didn't want to consolidate, or a portion of us, and so now, I just want to know where you want us to go at the next meetings.
Obviously, anybody can respond to that. My first response is that I think we want you to engage with what you think the right thing is for our schools, in whatever form that is, and I think, you know, all five are gonna be sitting on a piece of paper, and we're gonna have said, "We think these two over here are probably not likely," based on where we think the data is, but we want to know what you think.
Okay.
And I would leave it as open as that, and hear what, what everybody says.
Okay.
Tom, Pat, I just bought property in South Burlington, and my wife and I are moving here from Burlington because of the school's excellent reputation, so, once again, I'd like to say thank you for producing that result. I was at a loss to understand how four and five could ever work from a risk-reward perspective. Typically, when I, my background's IT. I do large-scale IT integration projects for a little, and typically, one of the things that we do when we analyze a project upfront is we look at, how are we going to improve the results for the business? In your case, your business is getting the best student outcomes across the board. Am I incorrect in that assumption? Okay. So, I don't see anything, and I've gone through 10 years' worth of statistics for the state of Vermont, all the elementary schools across the country, summarized by SchoolDigger and some other sites, and I have not been able to find, at least in the state of Vermont, how large elementary schools were getting into the top 10. In the last six years, only one large elementary school got into the top 10, and that had 510 K through five kids, so we're not talking a very large school. Conversely, the, out of the 12 largest schools in the state, six of those 12 are in the bottom 20th percentile right now. And that's not an anomaly. If you go back 10 years, you'll see that it's either four, five, or six every year. So, to me, that just, that just speaks of, I don't see how large schools can be successful, because we haven't seen the history of that here in Vermont. So, I'd always like to look at it from the standpoint of, who's done this before? Are they like us in all the, all the demographic data and all the other apples-to-apples comparisons you can do, and have they, how have they achieved that success? And if they can't, if I can't find anybody that's been successful before, then I question, well, why am I going to go this route? That's, that's typically how I work things with an IT project, and I, I just can't see how four and five could work. So I'm thrilled that you guys are looking more at one, two, and three at this point. And I hope we can look at more data, educational peer-reviewed data, to find the best solution for our schools. I think right now we have top-notch schools. And I think there's always room for improvement. But we need to look to school systems that are successful and model after what they're doing. Because I'm looking at MMU and I'm looking at CVU. They're not adding new buildings, they're not reconfiguring their schools. They're going inside the classrooms and adding program.
Great. Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
I did have another question, though, for kindergarten. This is coming up quickly. My son is gonna be enrolled in Markham this coming September. And I noticed that the enrollment numbers are high. And they're actually looking to get a fourth kindergarten teacher for that school. I was curious, how fast does that process ramp out? Because all the other districts in the state are now starting to post their openings. And I'd like to see excellence in this school district. And usually, the best teachers get grabbed first. So how does that process work? Is that, is that a quick process of procurement? Or is that something that lasts through the summer? How do you guys work that?
I'll defer to you.
Well, there's volatility currently in kindergarten. We have volatility at all, all three schools. And that's in part in play, kind of right-sizing our, our schools right now, where we have fluctuations in those numbers in our classrooms across all three. So we're currently with kindergarten, which is our unknown. We have the board, the community passed a contingency teacher. But we're also looking at, it's not maybe just one, but we've gotta look at kind of right-sizing across all three. So we're currently doing that right now with the elementary administrators and myself, and looking at individuals because of choice. Looking at some of that and the dynamics of that, which has happened because we've allowed some students to go to a Rick Markham school. That's an impacting on staffing, as well as our kindergarten entrance numbers and where we're, where we have kind of those, those bubbles happening. So we're working right now to identify that. And that's part of, not, if it is going to be an addition or a need, it comes back to the board in a request for the contingency teacher. We've made a reduction currently this year in this budget for a one less teacher at the kindergarten level at Chamberlain. So that's, that's a, that's a close watch. Markham obviously is, was predicted down, it's a little bit up. So again, we'll have to look at that. We look at kindergarten also across the entire district on the staffing levels. So the board asked me to look at, you know, the, the total number, try to keep that within our, within our policies and meet those needs. So we're, we're working on it as we speak. We actually met this week. We meet again the week we return, so. Yeah.
Any other final comments on this agenda item before we move on? Let's move into the curriculum development and review. This is more for action tonight. It's continued from our last conversation.
Was there any follow-ups on them?
I think the big follow-up was your PLP information that was a component of that. I think other than, that was, that was one takeaway that I had. As far as other things, they were not addressed or not brought up at that point.
Cheat cover.
I have a flag.
You even answered all the questions. All right. So are there any immediately pending questions? Okay. Get my bearings here. Is there just one?
It's just the one policy.
Just the one policy?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So is there a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we see adequate data?
Yep.
In compliance?
Not compliant.
Not in compliance. Do we, and we have a compliance plan? Compliance plan's acceptable?
Yes. Yes.
All righty. All right. Setting the full agenda for May fourth.
We need to, we need to cut this agenda. It goes to eleven oh five. And we're starting at six. I mean, that's unreasonable.
How do you feel about starting at five thirty?
Not, not well.
That's not the solution.
No.
So I think you can dump a couple of things off the agenda.
How about it, David? What, what, what are we dumping?
There were some things in there, just kind of our normal reporter, reporting, I think we could take out of there.
Yeah, I don't see a legislative report. I think you need to add that back in.
We need to move that out. So we have the auditor and SEI coming, I mean.
Yeah, and again, it's, I think it's, it's fitting that we essentially turned this into more of a financial-oriented media, I think, communication. City-school collaboration, I think we can, we can take off. If there's updates, we can do it through email. I think if there's update on communication, maybe there can be a quick announcement or something, but we can save some time there.
Well, let me just pop in there just for a second. So communication, I think we could probably drop. City-school collaboration, I'd like to keep on just because we're gonna have the April twenty-sixth meeting. And then we've got another one, in theory, on May seventh. So it might be a quick debrief to see if there's anything that we wanna alter. I don't think we should spend a lot of time there, but I'd keep it on.
Communication off, but keep city-school collaboration.
Yeah, and we'll be very efficient. Eight, nine, ten, I'll stay.
I mean, people can challenge some of the times. We put ti, we put times in here, which you may say are unrealistic, but.
Well, you have thirty-five minutes for the update on parent-teacher communication. What is that going to be?
Well, it's taking, it's part of our, our monitoring. We've, that's likely can be shortened up.
But that's not a monitoring report, Elizabeth.
Treatment of parents, two-point-one, treatment of parents and guardians.
Is that one that can come out?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at number sixteen administrative reports.
That's an administrative report. Let me take that out.
And I see that you're looking at number eighteen. That's fine, that's number eighteen. But, but what's the difference? What's in?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's, I mean, you guys can all correct me, but I don't think it's reasonable to start executive policy limitations at ten-ten.
I would agree.
We can, we can move those, you know. We'll move, we keep the master planning and visioning seventeen on, or whatever it becomes, as an update, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is kind of consistent there earlier. Maybe those could be combined.
Yeah, we could even combine those probably.
Yeah. And executive limitations, we can move to the, to another meeting. I, I wanna be sensitive, not just to say move it to the next, because I, I don't know then what we have. But, you know, we gotta get them in.
So you're gonna get rid of number sixteen as well, the administrative report? That's kind of.
Yeah, that's actually was a, was a placeholder there.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Is there any reason that we need more time in executive session than we can predict at this point?
I don't know, I think the hours.
Good.
Could, could fif, I'm just trying to cut, cut this down. For those of you who are there, could fifteen just be done with an email?
Capital lease for approval.
You picked a good one to miss, Elizabeth.
What's that?
You picked a good one to miss.
I don't know, John, I'll defer to you.
Well, it could be. I'm, I'm just concerned that if there's a lot of follow-up, May fourth, I'm only here two months. And I, I want all the cards on the table. When Leo Brown retired in nineteen ninety-one, they called him back in nineteen ninety-eight to ask him about the deficit. I'm, I'm serious. It's in the board minutes.
John, I'm calling you back.
Asking about the deficit seven years ago.
We're gonna call you back a lot, John.
Gee, that's a different tone, John.
He's got that lame duck syndrome.
No, I just, I just wanna be, have everything on the table. But you're right, maybe the lease could be, could be a memo. That's, that's fine. It's, it was, it would lay out the action the board has to take.
Well, there's no action. Oh, in upcoming, gotcha, okay.
Yes, yes. So it doesn't have to be real discussion unless there's questions. That's something we could.
Well, I, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it takes a lot off the agenda. It just wasn't an action item, so.
Right, yeah.
Gotcha.
I think we've, I think the rest we've probably have to materially stay. We'll just have to manage ourselves really well.
I think that some of it'll flow pretty well. It's almost all related to the audit and, and things like that, so.
All right. They set the agenda for May fourth, is done. Future agenda items, I do, I just wanna add a couple to our list for down the road. We, they were possibles for our work session that didn't make it. So we still need to talk about meeting evaluation at some point. I wanna have a, a little bit more of a formal, well, no, we don't need that one. And then whether, how we're managing monitoring reports in the future. There was a question about whether we do that by committee or as a full board. So I just wanna put that, those two out there for future agenda items.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanna point out that a lot of, is it monitoring report two-point-one-oh, which we just did? So we'll come back next year with those reports. But I don't think, I mean, there's the part that Martin wanted to make sure that, you know, we're doing the monitoring report piece on the ends.
Ends, yeah.
That should be on the future agenda item. But I think you could probably take this off. I mean, it's a standard report that now has those components in it.
Which one?
The, the ones that personal quality standards, including flexible pathway, personal running plans, graduation requirements.
It's two-point, twenty-one-twenty.
Yeah.
And so now it's all encompassed in that, so.
Actually, we've done those.
Right, we did it, yeah.
You know, and it will come up annually.
Did, John, did you bring up that employee manual would have to be on a future agenda?
Hey, future, I, I don't think it's ready for this one.
No, but maybe that could go in.
Future agenda items.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
But would that come up in the monitoring report?
Of two-point?
Hold on, two-point?
Eight compensation.
Well, maybe when, two-point-eight.
Speaking for Karen now, I think that she was trying to get that going so that we have something in place, if not July first, at least for the start of school.
I think it's, I think the way we've been doing this is right, that, that employee manual will come up. You'll review it, but then it gets embedded in, in compensation and benefits, two-point-eight, as in the monitoring report. Doesn't that make sense?
Is it a standalone future agenda item, that's, until it's?
That's right. But once, but once it's been looked at, then it goes into, which is consistent with what we've done on our agenda items.
Yeah.
Yep.
That works.
Okay.
Anything else under future agenda items?
We should consider the minutes of the April sixth meeting then.
I keep forgetting, because we keep calling this an action. Is this, is this a consent item?
Yeah, we do it all by.
Can we just, can we just change the language on that to say consent?
Yeah, well, it can all go under.
Just 'cause I keep forgetting.
It can all go under fifteen.
Yeah, well, you leave it separate, doesn't matter to me. The word action is confusing to me. I keep getting it wrong. So we have the consent agenda next then. David, do you wanna talk about the resignations?
Can I ask a quick question on the minutes? Because you two weren't here, should it be Elizabeth and I who sign it?
Yes, it should be. Just cross it out.
Well, that's not what, that's not what it says.
No, it says you and I.
I'll do this one.
So, yes, on the retirements and resignations.
Yep.
Nissa Cupola, who's been a one-point-oh FTE technology educator at the high school, fairly new to us, you know, she's been here, what, when I say new, it's been three, four years.
She said seven years in her letter.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm having a trouble recollection. Chris Kenneland, who has been a long, long time teacher here at the middle school. Sad to hear her departure, but again, she's been a great middle school mathematics teacher here. And we'll miss her. Vince Masso, a one-point-oh science teacher at the high school with over forty-two, forty years of experience at the high school, has submitted his letter. And Ann Stetson, probably eleven, twelve, thirteen years.
You know, at least sixteen.
More.
I've been here fifteen and she was here when I got here, so.
So here, been serving at the middle school. She's been a special educator, so she's also, so those are, those are those. So I would suggest, and we have a letter ready to go, we, we send on your behalf. You know, their acceptance, but with great appreciation, obviously, appropriately for those.
Much gratitude for all their work.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Dan. Bid for qualified general contracting services. We have this for action tonight.
It's in your packet. It was in your packet. And again, these are, John's identified, the nine or so, then it's down to three. So it's, it's action for, for those. I don't know, John, do you wanna, anything you wanna add?
Sure. We, we're pretty excited about this. There are two, RAD Sports and Field Turf are both more local Massachusetts-type companies. And Progress is our current vendor. And these, all three would act as general contractor for not only replacing the turf, but also the track. And, and so the only red flag on any of them was under RAD Sports. And number one was certified and that they had the necessary registrations. And they, I put down one point, 'cause we assume but not provided. We went back to them and said, are you, do you have the license? Have you registered with the Secretary of State? And, and they done work here, but they hadn't. So if they, they'll have to register. And the second thing, they're, they didn't really give us information about their bonding company, but they did in an email subsequent. So they got points docked, but they'll, they'll be okay. So Civil Engineering Associates helped with this, and so did Ed Hockenberry's office, so.
So does the same company maintain it over the years? Or how's that work?
Yeah, yes. If we buy, if, let's say, if we went with Field Turf, they would, they would maintain it, right? But this is the general, everything that we're doing out there, so.
Who's our current vendor? Who maintains it?
Progress. Progress. And they're, they're, they've, they wanna do the job too, so.
I just wanna thank you, John. I mean, nice job in his office and pulling this together. And the rubric and the checklist used is extremely helpful.
You're looking for the board to, to approve your recommendation of their pre-qualification statements.
That's right. If, if you do tonight, there'll be a walkthrough on Tuesday. And the RFP will go out the following Monday. And bids will come back for May sixteenth, and that'll be another action item, aside from consent, because it's over half a million dollars, so.
I move that we approve the bid for qualified general contracting services for replacing the artificial turf and running track at Munson Field.
A second motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Callers in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Couse payable order thirty-eight. Any questions on that? Now that is approved by consensus. Couse payable order checked to Howard Center. With the amount of fifty thousand for action tonight. Any other motion?
Move that we approve the payment to Howard Center for fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars.
Second.
I have a different amount on the agenda.
I thought it said, oh, it says in here that it's anything more than fifty, but it says on the actual paper that it's fifty-eight thousand. And if you add the two up, it's actually.
Oh, the, the, the agenda's wrong.
Agenda not.
Fifty-eight, nine, forty-nine, eleven.
I wasn't looking at the details.
Oh, there it is.
So your motion is right.
The motion is for the total.
Richard's motion is correct.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
That took quite a while. Like a stare-off. Any more discussion?
Where that was coming. Yes, I do have some discussion. I, it would, I think we've had this conversation before, but it might be, I know I would be interested in kind of an assessment, at least on an annual basis, of vendors that we, in particular, that require board action. So if you look at kind of the eighty-twenty rule, I think it would be helpful to know what the district is spending with these types of vendors, where particularly where board action is required, or where the sum of payments to certain vendors or suppliers exceeds a certain dollar amount.
In total, more total.
I'm sure, I know you track that, John. But this, I think this would help inform future budget discussions when we're talking about whether to add FTEs or not, rather, rather than try to. rather than try to do that analysis in the context of reviewing and approving the budget with the public, to sort of see what the trends are, and maybe look at, um, potentially cost-effective alternatives when we're not smack in, in budget season.
Sure.
So, not to digress from this particular action item, but-
No, that's okay. That's why we have discussion. Any other discussion? Now, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Do you have something else to?
I wanted to, we didn't do announcements, because we skipped over that, um, tonight, so before we adjourn, if we could do that.
Why don't you go right ahead and say, because we're about to adjourn.
Yeah. So, at, at your place are the announcements. Um, I'm not going to go over. I think you've already covered the, uh, master planning. Um, I already talked a little bit about some of the other conversations that are going on with me. Um, spring break, as you know, is next week, uh, so we've got a lot of folks, um, in our community moving around. We've got a Rick Markham, uh, Final Music Assembly, um, the 29th, um, Tubble Fest, and, we already covered the steering committee situation, but also the very last bullet, which is the fun you all have. We can do it as a signing, gathering, and party of the, of the diplomas.
They're already here.
Well, some of you come in, some of you come in, and two of you, usually, at a time.
No more than.
We can, we can warn if need be, but, um, we've also had some fun with taking a photo of those that are doing it, and putting, posting it up, signing diplomas, so, whatever.
In David's office.
Uh, yeah, in the conference room. So anyway, that's a, that's an important component. Don't wait till the last, because, you know, it doesn't, it's not like a two-minute thing. You've got to spend a little bit of time with us, which is-
Yeah, and make sure your letters aren't too big, because this group is really critical.
This group, meaning who?
Just get there first and sign big. You'll be all right.
I don't know, Elizabeth always had some letter dropping into my spine.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any, any discussion? Of course not. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good choice. Have a great night. Thank you very much.